Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting for the city of Saginaw. The meeting will be opened by prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Protam Brenda Moore.
For those that would like to participate, we'd like to bow in a moment. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you asking us to govern us accordingly, to thy will, not our will. We need to ask you to protect our workers as they travel about the city and the city at large, Father. We ask that you give us real guidance on all decisions that we make to now and forever. Those things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, we are ready.
Councilmember Forbes, present. Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protam Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Here.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
And Mayor Clock.
Here.
You have nine members present and zero questions.
Thank you. Today, I'd like to remind the audience that because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time to remind everyone, I guess myself including Alvin, and the rest of us up here, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Thank you.
We have one announcement on the agenda tonight. The city's waste convenience station is open to city residents the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Public Works Building. City residents may dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for cans, plastic containers, and paper. The next collection day will be this Saturday, September 14th. We have two proclamations on the agenda this evening. The first is proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of Spicer Group.
And tonight's first proclamation will be read by Councilmember Autumn Scherzer, and I understand Don Scherzer is here in the audience to accept. Please step forward.
Let me talk to Buddy. Well, this is an honor. The city of Saginaw proclamation, whereas Spicer Group, Inc., is celebrating 75 years of business providing professional engineering, land surveying, community planning, and architectural services. Spicer was founded by Clifford H. Spicer in 1944. Throughout the 75 years, Saginaw has been home to the Spicer headquarters and, whereas, following Clifford Spicer's graduation from the University of Michigan in 1924 with a degree in civil engineering, he was employed by the city of Saginaw Engineering Department. After 20 years, Clifford started his own business out of his home in Saginaw. And whereas dedicated to improving the community, Spicer assisted the Saginaw area throughout the years, continuing to grow and expand, becoming recognized as leading experts in environmental issues and storm water management. And whereas Spicer's growth has resulted in the establishment of several offices throughout Michigan and one in Georgia. Spicer Group's corporate office continues to remain in the city of Saginaw, showing their commitment to the city and providing steady and gainful employment to many area residents. And whereas Spicer Group has partnered with our city on several projects to include work at Ojibwe Island, the city of Saginaw master plan, Washington Avenue streetscape, and Hill Street construction, just to name a few. Also, throughout its history, Spicer Group has been involved in many key boards and commissions and committees providing insight and influence on issues related to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Floyd Clock, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, do hereby congratulate and commend Spicer Group on 75 years of excellent service. Further, I urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding commitment and contributions that Spicer Group has made to the city of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this ninth day of September in the year of our Lord 2019, signed by Mayor Floyd Clock, and also by councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Protam, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, as well as Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Please step forward and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Take around another 75.
We're gonna do that.
I gotta find it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is very kind of you.
Yeah, why don't you step to the podium? We'd love to hear it. Like, this way everybody can hear.
It's very kind of you. It's a very proud moment for Spicer Group. We're proud to be able to call the city of Saginaw our home for the past 75 years, and as you said, we're planning for at least another 75 more. I apologize for not being able to stay all evening for your meeting. I have another meeting that I need to attend. We are having our open house this Thursday, council, city staff. You're welcome to join us for that. This is a very special moment, and I just want to tell each and every one of you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, our next proclamation is recognizing the 100th anniversary of Camp Kiwanis.
And it's my honor today to present proclamation to the Kiwanis Club of Saginaw. It's special to me because I am the current president of that club, and I've been involved with Camp Kiwanis for 40 years. Today, receiving this proclamation is the incoming president for the Kiwanis Club as of October 1st, Ryan Jackson, and the secretary for the Kiwanis Club of Saginaw, David Skolnick, with member Bill Harmon here as well. If you'll step forward, please. Whereas, established, excuse me, city of Saginaw proclamation, whereas, established in 1919, Camp Kiwanis is celebrating 100 years of providing rustic camping experiences for youth around our region. Camp Kiwanis has been the signature youth service project of the Kiwanis Club of Saginaw for its entire existence. And whereas comprising over 69 acres along the Cass River, Camp Kiwanis is a historic, rustic, and unique camping facility in the heart of Saginaw County. It provides year-round camping opportunities to youth groups throughout the Saginaw and surrounding region. And whereas, although originally created for Boy Scouts, Camp Kiwanis is now available to all youth organizations such as Girl Scouts, church and school groups, and the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and others. Whereas, over the past 25 years, the Kiwanis Club has invested over 250,000 for improvements and new equipment at Camp Kiwanis. The updates included replacing roofs on 10 buildings, infrastructure improvements, and construction of a new storage facility. And whereas, the Kiwanis mission states, "As a thriving organization of men, women, and youth, we are dedicated to serving the children of the world and improving the quality of life worldwide." The Kiwanis Club of Saginaw is proud to serve the community by maintaining Camp Kiwanis in order to provide the youth an opportunity to experience nature and the great outdoors. And whereas, on September 14, 2019, the Kiwanis Club of Saginaw will host a 100th anniversary celebration at Camp Kiwanis and a memorial hike. Now therefore be it resolved, I Floyd Clock, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, do hereby recognize Camp Kiwanis on the honorable occasion of its 100th anniversary. We congratulate Camp Kiwanis and the Kiwanis Club of Saginaw and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all their future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this ninth day of September in the year of our Lord 2019, signed by myself, Floyd Clock, Mayor, together with councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Protam, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, and joined by Timothy Morales, City Manager. Please step forward. (applause).
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
If you'd like, we'd love to have a few words about this event and the anniversary.
So if you picked up on the first few words that Floyd said, much to everybody's surprise, he was not there at the beginning. He's just been there for the last 40. So a special thank you, not only to the council for their proclamation, but to Floyd for his leadership, not only for this past year as president of Kiwanis Club, but for the past 40 as one of the leaders and sustainers of Camp Kiwanis. He sees the value in the mission and really brings everybody along, literally, to help out. And again, I would like to invite everybody out Saturday to camp. If you don't want to walk the 10 miles out, you can join us right there, drive out there, and take a tour of the camp. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are now at public hearings.
And tonight, the purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, address, and your relationship to the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Because public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions, speakers may only ask general questions for council's consideration, not questions directed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first is regarding the water service agreement with Thomas Township to provide an alternative revenue-sharing mechanism for development occurring in the Great Lakes Tech Park.
Are there any comments to be had by any speaker? Any comments to be had by any speaker on the topic of this hearing? Third and final, are there any speakers on the topic of this hearing? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's carry. Next?
Our next public hearing is to request from Hosbeck Pickle Company Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 1820 Hess Street.
Well, do I need to read this, Tom, or you just want to go ahead and make comments? We'll make the request afterwards. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Manager Morales, councilmembers. My name is Tom Miller. I'm vice president of Saginaw, future of the Economic Development Agency for the city of Saginaw. You'll recall at a couple of meetings ago, Joe and Tim, I think both Joe and Tim were here, to request the establishment of Industrial Development District for Hosbeck Pickle for a new project they're working on. This is just the second step, which you all know, but for folks listening at home and in the audience, the first step creates the district, and then the second step is the actual approval of the request for abatement. Again, for the folks listening at home, this is for industrial companies only. They pay all of their existing taxes that are on the tax rolls now, and then they'll pay 50% of the taxes on the new project. So still contributing tax base, and it's not part of the abhorrent rule, so it's on a separate rule. Just briefly about the project, this is a $7.5 million project they're undertaking, and they're adding about 100,000 square feet of production space for pickles and peppers, including storage areas for finished goods, both cold and ambient temperatures. This is a good project for the city of Saginaw, obviously. They were looking at a lot of different locations around the area. Warehousing, obviously, because they do process a lot of bulk material, is a huge expense for the company. They have been leasing space outside of the city because we don't have a lot of really good buildings for warehousing. And although the project is very expensive, they chose to build in the city of Saginaw at their current location, so we're very happy with that, and I'll be creating some jobs as a result of that, 15 new full-time jobs. And I'll be available later for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any, is there anyone to come forward to make comments regarding the subject of this hearing? Anyone else to come forward with comments regarding the subject of this hearing? Final time, is there anyone to step forward with regard to comments on the subject of this hearing? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's carry. Madam Clerk?
We are now at public input.
Welcome to all of those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from our citizens that we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak clearly and slowly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council, so we can give serious considerations to your concerns. All follow-up will be directed to city staff. Thank you. Madam?
Mayor, our first clerk, our first speaker withdrew his name prior to the meeting, so we're gonna move on to the second one on your list, Celine Manan.
Mr. Manan?
Good evening. My name is Celine Manan, and I live at 1514 Milton Street, Saginaw, Michigan, and I'm here speaking for the African-American community and neo-NATO babies, and for myself. First and foremost, I want to say that I have before me what's called the analysts to analyze what harmful effects marijuana have on pre-NATO. Now, I don't have enough time to go through all of them, but I'll just say that it has a negative effect on the cognitive ability of the baby. Just that enough should be enough for us to put aside. And I want to say, quoting again Alice Freeman Palmer, and the reason that I'm going to get her in our past is because I believe that this city is preserved because we have a loyalty to the noble aspirations of the people who built this city, who laid the foundation. The further we move from loyalty to their noble aspirations, the further we move this city to decline. Now, Alice Freeman Palmer, there are many great things that I can say about her, but I found a kinship to her. And in my closing about some of the good things she did, her husband said, "We need to write a book. They're gonna forget you if we don't write this book." She died at the age of 47 because she was very sick, but she continued to work. She went to France for special treatment, but she continued to work for the advancement of women, minorities, and for the advancement of respecting the human intellect. She became the president of Wesley College. The last thing that she replied to her husband was that she said, "Every day you go out, I would like for you to find something to do good for people. If you do that, you would be assured of living a happy life." Her husband told her to write a book. She replied, "I don't strive for immortality. I just want to teach people to be straightforward and honest, and also I would like people to get the knowledge to make them happy, be secure in their life." Now, I want to tell you something. The lawyer that came the last time I was here, he pointed out that they lowered the liquor license for the area where my people are located. And in that article, they said the reason they're doing it because that was the community of people that suffered under those laws under marijuana. They admit that we were targeted. Now, proof that we weren't the only ones doing marijuana, you had a bunch of people who were not of my race who came in defense of it. But many of my people can't come because they locked up for little as that much marijuana. And now you want to come and say you're gonna locate in our community and the licenses are gonna be cheap? That's the justice? You gonna make it available? License cheap, come in so we can sell it to my people? And it's gonna be near a school called Arthur Hill Tech that used to train African-American men to be men? Many of the skilled trade people came out, they closed that school, and now you're gonna be selling marijuana not far from there. Now, if the state wants to come back and help us, we got some suggestions. We don't need the marijuana. Bring back the lottery money that we played so we can keep our schools open. Close the liquor stores. That's how you can help.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is remarks of council.
And tonight, tonight we start with, let me see.
Dame, Councilwoman Dame.
Dame, Councilmember Forbes, I have to find it, and I appreciate the help. Okay. Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks so much to Don Scherzer from Spicer, who's now left us, but also the Kiwanis members for working so hard to support true assets in our community. I am certainly looking forward to at least 75 more years. So as we've talked before, there are many changes coming from Proposition 3 that we all voted on last year. These will hopefully make it easier to register to vote and then actually vote. There is a bipartisan effort to inform voters about absentee voting and to help them sign up if they'd like to. The Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council, the March Continues, and Voters Not Politicians, along with a few other community organizations, are holding an absentee voter drive on Saturday, September 14th, at the CWA Hall at 1614 Mershan. There will be a brunch and a training at 10:30, followed by canvassing from 11:00 to 2:00. They really want to invite the entire community to attend, and no previous experience is required. And I can promise a delicious breakfast to fuel everyone up before they head out for canvassing. So I hope that of anyone that's interested in voter transparency, will give it a try and come on out. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ostache?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, welcome to everybody tonight, and I just want to say I hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. Always kind of signifies that summer's over with, but I'm hearing that we got some more warmer weather coming, so that's a good thing. Just thanks to our public speaker again for coming out and talking to us tonight. You took the time to come out here, and I just want to thank you for that. Also, was able to attend, we had the Light Up the City finale that happened on Ojibwe Island, and that was a nice event because city council was out there again and looking to talk to our citizens. And so I just want to encourage everybody that when we announce these things, that we're gonna be at different events, to come on out and talk to us because it does give you that chance to have some one-on-one time with your city council members. Another thing I just want to mention is if you like bike riding, there's a group here in the city called Connor Cruise, and they ride every Monday night in the city. They normally meet down on Hamilton Street in Cass, and this is by the old Stable Ski Shop. And right now, in September, they've started riding at 6:30 p.m. because of the shorter hours. So if you're interested in that, it's a great event. I've done it many times, and give it a shot. Also, I just want to make a note here that I did get an email from the Hearth Home in Saginaw, Michigan. Hearth Home is doing right now free HIV testing. It's over on the Cathedral District on Hoy Avenue, and this is something that takes about 15 minutes, and they're also offering while-supplied last gift cards. So I did get an email on that, and I do have their phone number, which is 989-753-9011, if you have more questions. And also too, just another comment about the, the Hearth Home is run from the Great Lakes Health Centers here in the region. They do a lot of other good programs for the city as well. They have a lot of locations, they have such as medical care, dental, eye, behavioral therapy, lab work, pharmacies, transportation to and from the appointment. So I just want to note that for our citizens, if you're having any troubles, that that is available to you, and also their phone number at 989-759-6470. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out and speaking this evening. And Celine, I do hear what you're saying. I'm concerned too about the people who have been locked up for smoking marijuana and selling it, and they're still locked up. You know, so I wonder if anybody's gonna be working on these legislation to help get those people out of jail for things that is gonna be legal now. You know, it seems like we need to be working on that, too. I do understand the perils and conditions that do happen in our community when people do get caught with drugs, ain't going to work on them. I know, I work at Next Year Corporation, and a lot of people get fired for having marijuana in their system. You know, so this thing is really getting to be a problem. And I must say, I've seen a lot of African-Americans get walked out of Next Year Corporation for having marijuana in their system. As a matter of fact, if anybody, I don't know how it is in other industries, but if you get injured, any type of injuries on the job, you cut your finger or really injure yourself, the first thing they do is give a drug test. So how is this gonna work in our community with legalizing something that's not legal in the whole society? So we got some things that we need to work on. So I'm sure they're gonna get ironed out, but in the meantime, a lot of people are suffering from these things. You can imagine how a family feel when a man or woman goes home and telling they got fired for using marijuana, and you got kids at home that need food. Then all of a sudden, they back on the welfare rolls back in the city of Saginaw. So we got some issues that we got to work on. Thanks for your comments, I appreciate it. Other than that, I don't have too much more to say. I'm always putting the pitch in for the Big Brothers and Sisters program. We need mentors in the city of Saginaw, Bay, Mount Pleasant area, and in the township. The Big Brothers of Saginaw is over all these different places, and that I can tell you is really rewarding when you can see a light bulb turn on a young man's head when you're working with him, a kid who don't have a father at home. I had the opportunity to give my little brother that's 12-years-old a tube box, a used tube box, and I gave him every tube that I could give him. And after we did my talk to the counselor at the Big Brothers office, she told me that her mother, his mother said that he's walking around the house with his tube box, asking everybody in the house what they need fixed. You know, and I thought that was a beautiful thing. You know, that's one kid who he knows is gonna be productive in this society by him working with other people and trying to fix his other brothers and sisters' bikes and stuff like that. So it warms my heart to know that it doesn't take a lot to light a light bulb up in a kid. It's the small things that count. You know, it's not all about the amount of money you invest in them, it's not about investing a little time. So I'm looking forward to everybody in here. I welcome to be involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program. I'd like to thank my fellow councilwoman, Mrs. Forbes. I found out last week that she was a big sister, too. Have you ever been?
Seven years.
Said anything about that, but I want everybody to know that we got another council big sister down there, too. So thank you very much, Dana.
Thank you. Councilmember Millen?
Thank you, Mayor Clock. Wanted to mention a couple places I've been this week and a couple things for people to look out for. Attended the Family Affair on Saturday, August 31st, down at Morley Plaza, sponsored by Kiss 1071. A number of our councilmembers were at that. It was a great event, and the number I heard was about 500 backpacks and school supplies were distributed. And it was also attended by a number of the county commissioners and county-elected officials. So it was a great piece of community teamwork. Just this morning, we had the inaugural first responders appreciation breakfast at the YMCA. This was sponsored in part by the YMCA and the Saginaw Exchange Club, of which I'm a member. Mayor Clock was able to attend, Councilwoman Scherzer. It was a very good attendance for an inaugural event. We even had an appearance by one of our K-9 officers as a first responder, and he enjoyed a little sausage break at the breakfast. So we're looking forward to this being an annual event. And I saw police officers from as far out in the county as Chestening, so it really has drawn people in. A couple of things just to look out for in the city. If you haven't taken a peek lately at the Lee Mansion on Washington, you can see something you haven't been able to see for over 50 years. They have removed the enclosure around the front porch, and you can see the original facade of that house, and it is a handsome building now, and really moving along with the renovation on that. And that's just more progress in downtown Saginaw. And the project we are talking about this evening, the Hosbeck Pickle Edition, construction has begun there, and that's progress for the whole city. That is, basically, when you build a 100,000-square-foot building, you use up a city block to put it on because you have the dock approaches and everything. So it's really, looks to me like it's about doubling the facility they have over there. So that's gonna be quite an addition, finish up next year sometime. And that's my comments for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again want to send my
I again wanna send my congratulations to the Spicer Group for seventy-five years, so, Betsy, is that correct? Please share my, uh, congratulations with the rest of the staff there, um, and my uncle. Um, and then also congratulations and, uh, to the Kiwanis for your hundred years, we truly appreciate your contribution to the community. I can mirror some of the things other fellow councilmembers have said already, but I won't. Um, today, we, Councilwoman Bryant and Mayor Clark and I were, uh, with the Lieutenant Governor at the Saginaw Community Fund, oh, I'm sorry, Jamie, you were there, too, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilmember Forbes was there as well. Uh, for the thriving cities, um, there were fellow, other fellow, uh, elected officials and leaders in the room talking about, uh, what our city needs and where we should be going, so that was some great conversation that we had. I wanna send my support and, uh, a thank you to the mayor and as well as other council members for the Animal Control Center and their decision on what, where the facility should be. I'm a strong supporter for the city, and I hope that is highly favored and, uh, recognized as they make some considerations and, uh, final decisions. Uh, also, to our students that went back to school, I just wanna wish you a safe and progressive and great school year this year, um, for all of our city students, but also of the students in the county. Um, and then lastly, uh, I received a couple more, uh, complaints about the Carmen Park trees, um, and that's very close to home for me, so if we could get some resolution or a answer on what's going on, how we're gonna move forward, that would be great. That is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protenmore.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say congratulations to Spicer's. Go Spicer, you know you're my team. Uh, and I'd also like to congratulate the Kiwanis. A hundred years is a long time, long time, long time. So I've seen it roll, and so therefore I'm thankful that you're still here. For our public speaker, we thank you so much. We need to hear comments from our citizens to let us know how they're really feeling. The last couple of weeks, 'cause we've been off three weeks, first I need to do this, I need to thank all of the council people that sit up here with me for attending Light Up The City and for their contributions that they did to the book pack giveaway for Family Affair last Saturday, Saturday before. We did, we gave away four hundred and fifteen bags and still giving them away. They didn't just have book bags, we also gave them underwear, socks, the sanitizer wipes, we gave everything that we thought the kids needed for school, and they had a ball. The number, Count John, was five hundred and forty-three, you know we had to find that one out. Um, and so they were excited. At Light Up The City, you know, I danced till I dropped, and I need to thank the council people for supporting me all summer in endeavors that we've been doing. On October the twenty-ninth, the Bay, the formerly known as James Street Clinic to me, but the Great Lakes Bay is having their annual luncheon. I am a captain, and I need ten people to come and go to the fundraiser luncheon with me, it's free. It'll be at twelve o'clock, twelve to one, and it's going to be at the Dolly Bed Center. So I'm asking for ten people, if not more, 'cause y'all know we can do four, five tables. I'd love to outshine everybody else and have the room full of bringers people. But they're looking to let you know what's going on at James Street. James Street is a community organization that does a lot in the community, so I need to get some people to go with me to the luncheon. I see hands going up, I thank y'all so much, get with me afterwards, so that we can have a good show of the city representation. Andy, Andy said, what's the date? October the tenth, uh, twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth. Uh, I also too met with Lieutenant Governor. I didn't meet with the group, we met afterwards, we had a luncheon with him, and we are in the process of developing new activities as relates to the laws. I keep hearing people talk about what's going on with the marijuana laws. I can't tell y'all, tell you next time.
Thank you. Councilmember Annie Betch.
Thank you. Uh, good evening to everyone. I too want to offer my congratulations and thank you to Spicer Group and, uh, the Kiwanis Club. Seventy-five and a hundred years, that's a very long time, and we're very lucky to have businesses and organizations like that, uh, here for so long. Mr. Manon, thank you for being here, um, your passion is always appreciated. I think we can work to address some of the issues that you bring up, and I'd be happy to talk to you sometime about some of the other concerns that you have. But we appreciate, you know, your thoughts, for sure, thank you. Mayor Protenmore, uh, you thanked us for showing up, uh, all summer, we definitely owe you a thank you for, uh, organizing and setting up, um, the council presence at the events and, uh, taking the initiative to do that, and, um, and then showing up yourself and dancing and entertaining people, and just putting your time and your, your energy into things, so, um, it always, it's always nice to, to, uh, be able to show up and hang out with you at these things, so, thank you for all you do, and, uh, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you. Mayor Proten didn't say that she was dancing at the Family Affair, too, it was a really great time. We had, uh, I took some of my family down there, I'm usually not one to have, uh, babies with me, but I had one on each arm and kinda one in my hand, so, but it was a great event, it really was, to bring the community together just before, uh, back to school. It was great, if you listen to the Kiss One-O-Seven, they will, uh, announce all those who were participants in that, and it was just, it was a great event. Um, wanna follow up, uh, and say thank you to Spicer for their work in the community. Don and Angie are, uh, great friends of mine, and they are great friends of the city of Saginaw, so it's good to recognize them. Also, a hundred years for Kiwanis, thank you guys for everything that you do, uh, on behalf of our community. We do have another organization that will be selling, celebrating a hundred years, and that is Zion Missionary Baptist Church. So I'm gonna be, um, asking the mayor for a proclamation for that. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to sit on a panel of, uh, of experts, and I'm not really sure why they asked me to come, but just to talk a little about, uh, the city perspective when it comes to sexual assault in Saginaw County. Uh, and I wanna thank, uh, Chief for allowing, uh, Community Police Officer Ryan Jeruski to attend that, it was very good. Uh, he, there were some state troopers there as well, and we had some very open and frank conversation about what we can do to stop that, as well as, uh, sex trafficking. I wanna give my kudos to, uh, Mr. Carwatt, great job. Mackinaw is almost done, my phone calls are kinda slowing down a little bit, uh, but I have been able to walk some of the people through, through what has really been going on, between Consumers Energy, with the gas mains and the electrical, um, and of course, uh, with the replacement of the water mains as well. So it was a huge process, uh, and it took a long time, but hopefully we will not have to address anything there for the next generation, so, thank you, Mr. Carwatt, for that, uh, and all those who are part of that project. Did have a chance to meet with, uh, Thor Rasmussen, he is working on some projects with the, uh, Temple Theater and the Art Museum, so, um, he's gonna ask for some collaboration from us, so please, council members, watch your email, 'cause I'll be asking for some help. Had an opportunity to meet with our clerk and the deputy clerk to talk about some, uh, cool things regarding election twenty-twenty and what we can do to recruit people, so, thank you, Chris, um, and Jan for that, it was very good. Uh, and the other thing is, yes, meeting with, uh, Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist was great today, we talked about everything from, uh, infrastructure to CTE to, uh, policy, and the one thing I wanna say is, thank you to Tom Miller, Jr., thank you, sir, you cut right through all the nice talk and everything else and told the Lieutenant Governor exactly what you thought and exactly what we needed, so it was great to have you in that room today. Uh, Community Ventures, uh, was a phenomenal program, we seen it through another administration, some changes had shifted, but through that program, Community Ventures, twenty-two thousand people in the city of Saginaw benefited from that, so, wanted to say thank you to Mr. Miller for that.
Thank you. I think it's my turn, if I don't cover everything I need to cover, I'll do it at the end, but there's several things. First of all, I wanna say thanks to, again, to the Saginaw Basin Lane Conservancy. On April twenty, uh, excuse me, August twenty-eighth, uh, they hosted a, um, sort of a conference called Talking Trash. Sounds like a funny name, but it was about recycling and cleaning up the city. Um, it was very informative and very helpful, and was at Saginaw Valley State University in the Curtis Hall, but their goal is to try and help, uh, the entire county, um, keep the city clean and to teach people about the need for taking care of your own property and to how to go about, uh, doing some things that are needed to, uh, deal with, uh, trash and to make it a regional, uh, litter-free area. So that was a very good program, and they intend to do a lot more, and many of you know that they're doing, uh, things like the, uh, the, uh, butterfly, uh, lots, uh, working with plantings and so on, they're, they plan on doubling, if not tripling, the number of, of, uh, pollinator plots this coming year, so they're doing a lot. And part of what they're doing is cleaning up, they cleaned up the whole area along Potter Street just, uh, the last week, I think it was. So they're doing a tremendous job, and I wanna give kudos to them, and I encourage everyone to work with them and support them. Um, the hundred, the seventy-fifth anniversary for Spicer is being celebrated, as, uh, Mr. Scherzer mentioned, uh, but he didn't give you the date and time. There's an open house, uh, at two-thirty South Washington Avenue, their office, on the twelfth, between five and eight PM, and certainly, I know they'd be happy if anyone was willing to stop in and congratulate them on their anniversary. In addition, um, the Jibwe Island improvements are done, and there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September sixteen at, uh, of this year at between eleven and twelve PM, and we would certainly invite everyone to attend that ribbon-cutting, because that's a significant improvement to the park, and we're very happy to have that completed. Um, next, uh, on Friday, September twentieth, there will be an Advanced Vehicle Technology, uh, conference out at, um, hosted by the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with the Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce, at, um, Saginaw Valley State University, again, University, Curtis Hall. It is a paid, uh, thirty-five dollars for members and forty-five dollars for non-members of the, uh, chamber, or either chamber, but, uh, it is about the, uh, leading the way in public policy, uh, event from, from these chambers of commerce. So we are facing a new future with regard to advanced vehicles, and this is part of that, uh, preparation. I will cover the rest later. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Uh, first, um, the, please, I think the mayor did receive phone calls regarding that, too, and, uh, staff has talked to some residents in Lizzie Drive and Carmen area, and they did, um, take some of the limbs down that were dangerous, have inspected the other trees, and don't find any imminent threat in the area, but they will be doing some more trimming in the fall after the, some of the street projects are done. But this is a, this is an issue, I think, citywide that we have to be aware of, it's not just in one area. Uh, another council member pointed out trees and cemeteries that could be an issue. Um, probably, every other week, I see a downed tree in Dindorfer, so it's not something that is limited to one specific area, and we do have limited resources, so, usually we're in a mode where we are responding to downed trees rather than being able to trim them on a regular basis, it's just an issue of a limited staff and limited funding, uh, for that. But if you, if there are specific areas, uh, always, um, report those to, uh, public services, and they'll, uh, do the best they can with, with the resources that we have. Speaking of roads, the mayor, um, uh, Mr. Carwatt and I attended Road to Progress, which was a, um, hosted by the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce, and it was a forum on, on road funding, um, however, it seems like the only solution that anyone has at that level is just increase taxes, so, I'd say, um, we didn't hear much about utilizing, uh, the resources to the best that they can do, which I, I think is something that our Public Services Department has done with the street's money. Um, I'd like to hear more from the state about changing the way that they do business to possibly, uh, maximize the resources that they currently have, I think that would go a long way with, uh, the citizens and maybe could, could encourage people or, or make it more positive to pay a little bit more, uh, if they could, um, do more with what they have as well. So I'd, I'd compliment our Public Services Department in the road work that they've done as well. Uh, mayor and I also met with Professor Noda from Kyoto, Japan, which I thought was really interesting, because, uh, he is a professor, and he is, uh, doing analysis of American cities to see how we have dealt with decreasing population and decreasing funds, 'cause that is an issue in Japan now as well. So it's interesting to know that that's not just a Michigan or a, a problem in the US, but it's a problem, uh, around the world as well, so, I think we do have another contact there, and I think the mayor could have someone to visit in Kyoto now as well. So, um, hopefully we can continue to, uh, talk with him and see the results of that analysis when it is completed. And the mayor mentioned the Jibwe Island ribbon-cutting ceremony, um, I think that's a good opportunity to see, um, what's the project at the island, but also highlights the relationship that, um, the city is developing with the county parks, because they're a partner in that project, as well as the Michigan DNR, so, if you get a chance and can go to that, um, I recommend it. However, that day, um, I and some of our, uh, fiscal services and OMB staff will be at the Michigan Treasury Local Government Summit, I mentioned last time that, uh, one of the presenters at that, uh, conference will be Saginaw Valley State University, who's reporting on our blight elimination programs and the impact. So, I think that will be really interesting to see. And, um, with that, we do have some presentations this evening, and, um, first I'd ask Tyler Danek from Covenant Healthcare to come up to the front, and, uh, he's going to be introducing one of our new members for the Police Department.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name's Tyler Danek, I am the Director of Risk Management and Legal Services at Covenant Healthcare. Uh, that also gives me the pleasure of serving as the Director of Security at Covenant Healthcare. Uh, on behalf of Covenant, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to introduce the newest rock star walking around Covenant's campus, uh, which is K-nine Harvey. Um, at Covenant, our purpose is to provide extraordinary care, uh, and that absolutely requires a safe and secure environment to provide that care. Uh, as some of you may remember, in March of two thousand and eighteen, a year and a half ago, uh, Vice President Kevin Albasta addressed this council, uh, to introduce the concept of the Saginaw Police Department partnering with Covenant Healthcare's security team, uh, to create a synergy that could hopefully enhance the security at Covenant. Uh, at that point, it was just a concept, uh, now a year and a half later, uh, I'm here to talk about the enhancements of that concept. Uh, adding police to Covenant's internal security team has absolutely been incredibly valuable to Covenant, uh, to the community of Saginaw, our patients, visitors, and our employees. Some of the impacts of having Saginaw Police on our campus, uh, are truthfully difficult to measure. The deterrent impact, for example, is hard to quantify, uh, but I can tell you from my experience and my role at Covenant, uh, and I know Officer McGregor could probably share a number of examples, uh, the timer would have to go off for us to get through all of them, uh, so I'll save those for another day. Uh, but as a result of the leadership of Chief Ruth, uh, Lieutenant Bell, and Security Manager Joe Dutoy, we've been able to not only increase that partnership to a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day, uh, presence on Covenant's campus, but now we're also able to introduce, uh, Harvey to you all, uh, and I will say, uh, that the amount of, um, emails and text messages that I've received in just the short time that that press release has gone out, uh, our staff are incredibly thankful for that opportunity, for the relationship. Um, our patients are already providing feedback on how well that's working, and again, I think that helps show the, the absolute impact that that is having at Covenant. Uh, so a year and a half later, uh, after Mr. Albasta addressed this group, I'm very proud on behalf of Covenant to address this group, and thank you for the opportunity, uh, that we now have a K-nine presence along with our twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage at Covenant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, that makes the, uh, Covenant has four regular officers and one, uh, K-nine officer that they fund now, so there are five. So the, the formula is usually- So the formula is usually four officers for 24/7 coverage. We're funding 24/7 coverage plus another K-9 and we know that those officers can respond to backup and they are responding in that neighborhood and to backup as well. So it's a real benefit for both Covenant, as Tyler mentioned, as well as the city overall. And that's a significant investment for the officers and including the K-9, they've fully purchased Harvey for the program. So we, I think it's beneficial for all of us. And now the second presentation, I'll ask Chief Van Leeu to introduce his team and then also the presentation that they'll be doing this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Manager Morales. I want to take a few minutes tonight to kind of update you as to some of our efforts at the Fire Department on community risk reduction programs. With me tonight is State Fire Marshal Kevin Solmeyer and Lieutenant Pettenger from the Saginaw Fire Department. So I'm going to start off talking about some of the programs we just actually wrapped up. Very proud of the work that was done by the department accomplishing the programs. And then I'll turn it over to State Fire Marshal, who's going to talk a little bit about the state programs and then the kind of the bigger perspective picture. And then Lieutenant Pettenger will wrap up with some of the local work that's been done recently. I think you'll all be very impressed. So I'm proud to report that within the last couple of weeks, we just wrapped up a FEMA grant program for 2,000 smoke alarms. So we installed 2,000, you know, and that's, that's great. Yeah, I think the important thing to remember is when we do these programs, it's not we're just putting up smoke alarms, it's the interaction and the home visits that we're doing. That's the real benefit of the program. So smoke alarms are great and they're well-needed, but actually getting in and talking with residents is a huge benefit. Also, we wrapped up around the same time installing 500 carbon monoxide alarms and those are provided through MI prevention, which I believe State Fire Marshal Solmeyer will speak to a little bit. So we really appreciate the partnership we have there and the support they provided. So at this time, I'd like to introduce State Fire Marshal Kevin Solmeyer.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager. On behalf of our Governor Gretchen Whitmer, it's an honor to be here tonight as the Fire Marshal for the state of Michigan. One of the things that we embarked upon with this MI prevention, the chief talks about, was roughly just over two years ago. We knew that we had a fire fatality problem in the state of Michigan and one of the things that I was tasked with as the new Fire Marshal, what are you going to do to lower the number? One of the things that I had seen coming from the Grand Rapids Fire Department was we had fire suppression crews that are out putting up smoke alarms and I saw what we could do in the community and what the men and women of the fire service could do by getting out and interacting. Tried to bring that to the state level. One of the things I found out very quickly at the state level though was you can't really make anybody do anything. And when I say that, it's not like it's regulated. And also, I found out that there were fire departments like the Saginaw Fire Department, they're already doing amazing things. So one of the things is we started to look at what is a program that has an urban feel, a suburban feel, and a rural, rural feel. And if you look at our great state, we have 10 million people across the state, but we have them in pockets, but then we also disperse over areas, which most of the areas outstate are predominantly volunteer fire departments. So one of the things that we looked at was how could we start to put together a program? And what was interesting, and this is why I really want to come here and share the successes, you know, when you start a new program and you ask people to get involved and you don't have a budget, that was the other thing they shared with me, you have a budget of zero, okay? Reduce the number of fire fatalities statewide and you don't have a budget. So one of the things we started looking at was, is what are some of the things that we can do? How can we collaborate? How can we work together? And some of the first people to come on board were the men and women of the Saginaw Fire Department. So I want to commend them for believing in, if you want to say this, MI prevention, this vision. We were very fortunate, last August, to be awarded a $525,000 grant. Well, get a little bit of money, you can do a few things, right? And that's one of the things that I wanted to share is that this is a statewide program that's being, currently, as of today, we have 108 fire departments across the state that are putting up smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. To give you an idea of that, Chief talks about the 2,000 we put up here in Saginaw. In the last five months across the state, the men and women of the fire service have put up almost 17,000 smoke alarms. Now, our goal when we wrote the grant was 16,000, but this is kind of where the collaboration thing comes in. In talking with Chief Van Leeu, he shared, hey, I've got this price and that price was a pretty good price with Home Depot. In the process, we leveraged some state purchasing and we actually got that lower price. Our goal was to put up 16,000, we actually purchased 21,000. And I'm confident within the next month, we'll finish that up. If you think about it, 20, almost 22,000 smoke alarms statewide. We're seeing a reduction in fire fatalities in our state this year alone, 28%. So that we know that, that getting the early detection. But I think one of the things that I want to close with and that I really want to compliment the Saginaw Fire Department on, and that is the interaction of the community. It's getting into those homes, it's getting that interaction with the family. And here's a trend that I've seen as the Fire Marshal, as we're gathering this data that's coming back in. A lot of our fatalities in the state of Michigan, the people are not getting all the way out. What I mean by that is the smoke alarm wakes them up, but because of what's burning today, because of the modern furnishings, all the plastics, it produces a lot more black smoke. The oxygen level, the heavy black smoke displaces the oxygen, which causes, basically, you're trying to leave, but your oxygen levels are going down. And time and time, time and time again, and that's what frustrates me as a Fire Marshal, is I hear from a fire department, yes, those folks were trying to get out, but they didn't quite make it all the way to, all the way out. We have to make a paradigm shift here in the fire service and that's one of the cool things that, when I talk about the program that Eileen's been working on in the schools, is we have to educate people differently. And educating them differently is, it's not always going out your front door, it's not always going out your back door, it may be going out a window. And we need to change these things. And I believe that if we work hard together on this interaction of the community, coupled with all the smoke alarms that we've been putting up, that we can see results across the state, but more importantly, we drive down the number of fire fatalities in the city of Saginaw. So kind of where we got with Eileen in this program and also with Chief Van Leeu, I got an opportunity, there's a national program for Sound Off and that's what Eileen's going to tell you about. And, you know, they kind of heard we were doing some things here in Michigan and they were, I was reached out to by a group called Vision 2020, it's a national initiative. And they said, Fire Marshal, do you have a fire department in the state of Michigan and there's certain things that they were looking for? And I said, I think I do. Well, you realize they'll have to go out to the schools, they'll have to get involved and more importantly, they're going to have to go out and follow up with smoke alarms. Well, if there's one thing that the Saginaw Fire Department has proved to be very good at, and that's putting up smoke alarms. So I wasn't too worried about that part of it, okay? But you wait until you see the things that Eileen's about ready to share with you, amazing things. There again, it's an honor to be in Saginaw tonight. Thank you for the Saginaw Fire Department and also the city of Saginaw and believing in something that this Fire Marshal was trying to move ahead. We will make a difference in this state and I thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight.
Thank you.
I gotta bring this down a little bit. So if you don't know me, I'm Lieutenant Eileen Pettenger. I'm at Station 4 on State Street and we were lucky enough to be chosen as the first department in Michigan to bring this program. It's called Sound Off. It's specifically for second and third graders. We, Fire Marshal Martin and myself went into the schools and we talked to the kids and let me just start it up for you. So we started in February 2019 and we went to four schools. We went to Arthur Eddy, we went to Loomis, Jesse Rouse, and Merrill Park. And we just randomly chose the different schools. We recognized certain fires in that area, so we talked to the principals. We actually did talk to the Board of Education and we are going to co-speak with them in a few weeks as well to give a final report. So we had their support. You see, we went in there into the schools and talked to second and third graders. What we did is a pre-test, the first visit, so we'd go one day and give a pre-test just to see what their general knowledge was. It was a 10-question quiz, really simple, and then we told them about our program and then we gave them homework, but this was kind of fun homework. What it was is, we wanted them to go home with an adult in the home and count how many smoke alarms they had in the home and see which ones were working and then actually make sure they had exits in and out of the house. Not just the exit of their front door, but to check the windows. A lot of times, we all know, sometimes your windows are painted shut or they might not be working. And then we said, if you guys do this and bring your homework back, we will come to your house and install free smoke alarms. We'll come on a fire engine and let you look at the fire engine and practice fire drill and if you bring it all back, we'll give you a pizza party. And that worked, let me tell you. These kids, it was like 90%, 95% return rate and then we followed up. So then we came back with the post-test the second, second time to see how much they had improved and it is incredible. Let me show you some results. I'll show you the results in a minute. I want to show you the fun stuff. The pizza parties for the kids, oh my gosh, they had so much fun. I never saw kids eat so much pizza. And then we also gave gift cards to the teachers as an incentive to help spread the message and talk to them about it. And also, we gave them posters to put up in the rooms and it was such, it's incredible. Like, we don't honor our teachers enough, right? Just a little gift card with an incentive, they were just so grateful. It was a great program. And so then, this was my favorite part, the home visits. So with that homework, we found out the addresses of the homes. And then what we did is, we called them up and set up a time that was appropriate for them, went to the homes and installed smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms in every bedroom and every living area. And then we did fire drills. Now, a lot of times, the parents were pretty shocked because they hear about fire drills in school and I think all of us here practiced fire drills in school, but maybe didn't learn it when you were a kid, right? So what we did is, we had the whole family practice. So these on the left here, they actually just were neighborhood kids that came up to see what was going on and we actually helped more neighborhood kids and practiced fire drills while we were there. And then this family, like, just touched my heart. So this family had actually had a cooking fire. So they recognized how important it was to have smoke alarms in their new homes, so they called us up and they said, thank you so much, it's a blessing. I mean, you can see how many kids this lady has. So we practiced with all those kids, a fire drill. And what we did at the fire drills, we actually had a meeting place. So we'd have them pick like maybe a phone pole or a tree, like a little further out from their house to meet there and to practice, if there's actually a fire, that they all meet there, they don't ever go back in for a cell phone or Xbox or anything like that. So we practiced with them. And then this family, we installed four smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarm. It's just so encouraging to see how people are so excited about this and then they would tell more people about it. It just really spread. And then this family was my favorite. This family, they have, the son, her son on the left has special needs, I'll show you some more pictures, the Kay's family. So he has a heart and lung condition and he's also deaf and blind. He's got the whole genre there. And we actually installed bed shakers. So if you're not familiar, a bed shaker, it's like an alarm underneath the bed, so it shakes the bed if a smoke alarm goes off. And they cost around $200. And we were able to, with this grant, able to get this, for this family for free, all of it. So it was so encouraged. She was so grateful, she was crying, she was so grateful. So let me tell you, we are making a difference and it's just so encouraging to see this in the schools and the kids so excited. And then we had partners. We found out, you know, a school of choice, sometimes the kids didn't live in the city of Saginaw. So we reached out to Buena Vista and Carlton and they helped us too and they actually were really excited and we even shared some pizza with them too. But, yeah, so it was great to have partners on our side and working together. We, they're, we're so grateful for that. And then we even had Detroit reached out to us. So here's what happened with this. With the Sound Off program, it's a national program, they actually had a school, an academy down in Detroit that needed such a program. So I just went with Detroit and actually just introduced them to it. And then they, we hope to have them join next year as another program. But it's really a pretty cool honor to be recognized nationally, Saginaw, as the first department in the state to do this. Can't tell I'm excited, but. All right, so here's some stats. So this was, was really cool. Look at this, 45.8 increased knowledge from pre-test to the post-test. That's the national and they've had this going since 14. Look at that. We have 51.8, we beat the national average. Like, I'm pretty stoked about this. But, so you can tell that, I mean, it's working and hopefully, next year, we'll be able to hit the other schools that we didn't, weren't able to get to this year, but we had, so. And then here's the rest of the stats. We did 13 class presentations, seven second grades, six third, grand total of 282 students, 64 home visits with every single of those houses having fire drills. So now you have all these families with these kids knowing what to do and the adults knowing what to do. 303 smoke alarms, 28 Sound Off smoke alarm, or carbon monoxide alarms, and then 37 extra ones that we had from another grant. So these are all grant-funded. And then the two life tones, that's for those bed shakers that I talked about, one for that family I told you about and one for an elderly in Buena Vista. And that's it. So I just wanted to share that with you and we're very happy.
So I'd just like to wrap up. I think you see what a great job Eileen's done and I appreciate the support and help that State Fire Marshal has provided in my prevention. You know, we couldn't do these things alone, so. And if I hadn't said it before, we are one of 40 communities in the country and the only one in the state run these programs and we got outstanding results. We look forward to doing more in the future. This is just the beginning, I believe. Community risk reduction is the future of the fire service and I believe we're well on our way. And I know I have a Fire Marshal, a State Fire Marshal who supports that. And if you have any questions at all, it'd be a great time.
We have one at least. Go ahead.
So I just want to make some comments. I want to thank you guys for what you're doing for fire prevention and I know our Fire Marshal is heavily involved, so I think on behalf of the council, I just a huge thank you for what you're doing for the community, but not to steal the thunder because you guys are great, but Eileen, it is great to see you. We are so happy that everything is handled from the incident that came, so I'm glad to see you.
Glad to be here.
Anybody else? Yes, Jeff.
I just have a question for the Fire Marshal. Kevin, you're going to come visit us for Fire Ops at the end of the month.
I'm checking my schedule. I know the chief mentioned that and you're right and that was one of, I enjoyed that day with you all and I would encourage, I know there's some new council members, please come to Fire Ops. It is a great opportunity to see what this whole firefighting business is all about. So thank you, I look forward to that.
We're adding a search and rescue option to it too, so I hope you can make it.
Oh, my boss better give me the day off.
Thank you so much. I know what you do is really important and I see y'all in the neighborhood blocking my street, playing basketball with the kids, but that's okay. I got a challenge for the other council people. Since Op is coming up, you need to clear your schedule. Since Fire Op is coming up, we need to clear our schedule because we need, we need to be there and we need to participate. Don't just be there and eat the spaghetti like me.
And we're having another meal.
No hot sausage.
Oh, do what we gotta do.
No hot sausage.
Okay, okay.
You haven't yet mentioned when and where, because I was going to cover that later, but now I'm going to have you do it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So Fire Ops is going to be September 30th, it's a Monday, starts at 9:00 a.m. at Central Fire Station, 801 Federal. And we have invitations out to council, county commissioners and some state and hopefully some federal legislators, so, yeah. Please come out. If you've been out before, come out again. I think you understand.
Well, it depends, we'll see. But it was, it was a great experience. It's a matter of, it's a matter of time. Yeah, I've done it, it's great.
Give me some spaghetti.
They have good chefs, by the way. Maybe it'll be something different, but it'll still be good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Fire Marshal. And Lieutenant Pettenger, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I think that you mentioned that this is also something that since Chief Van Leeu has been the chief in this command staff, I've been working on community education for several years, so this is a new program for them, but it's not a new philosophy. Really, really what I think has made a big difference, there's a lot of efforts here in the blight elimination is one, but the education that the Fire Department has been doing has, I think, reduced the number of fires and also created an environment where people can. That's been a great program that the Fire Department has been working on. This is a great next step because once they're working with the kids, they can take that and...
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
We are now at Board Commission Committee Reports.
Are there any boards, commissions, or committee reports? Anybody? We've got to start getting some reports. We have to meet. We've been off.
Yeah, well, don't go there, you don't want to say you're off. We will, we will get some more meetings going, so.
Good. Madam Clerk, next item?
Our next item is resolutions. We do have one on the agenda tonight. It's to approve the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for 1820 Hestry.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
We're now at miscellaneous business.
Any council member have anything miscellaneous?
Yes, I do have some, sir, thank you. I attended a meeting at the, oh, at Old Rep. Thomas's church this Sunday, and they had people there from the, from the, sorry, from the skilled trades center, and some people from the city of Saginaw, and the Board of Education Chair was there, talking about the skilled trades in the city of Saginaw, and the monies that the state have gave the schools to get kids involved in skilled trades. Now, there's a lot of money that's available for skilled trades in the city of Saginaw. We just have to, you know, introduce our kids to skilled trades. So everybody here needs to take that back and tell your kids, and maybe start Googling it. I tell kids all the time, don't even think about anything, Google it, it's on the web. Tell them about skilled trades, because they're talking about, we got people with master degrees and bachelor degrees that don't make as much as skilled tradesmen make, and they're coming back into the field to try to make that money for skilled trades to take care of their families. So if anybody, know anybody interested in skilled trades, you can get with me, or somebody at the Board of Education to find out more information about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Pro Tem?
Just a quick reminder, NAACP's 100-year celebration is coming up. If at all, we need to attend if we can, and also a shout-out for the community. The NAACP will be celebrating 100 years on the 22nd. That's another long time. So if you can, please attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Something real quick?
Yes, Councilmember Austin.
Yeah, I just want to bring up, Councilman Mill mentioned the, Lee mentioned, some of the changes that you can see as you go down Washington Avenue, and I don't know if anybody's taken a drive by Hoyt Avenue, or down Hoyt Street next to the St. Mary's Cathedral. The rectory is now being restored. They've taken off all the aluminum, and they've exposed the beautiful cornice work that's underneath, so if you want to see that, it's just a few blocks off Washington as well.
Okay, anybody else? I have a couple of things. Mayor Pro Tem more mentioned the Freedom, it's essentially the Freedom Festival.
Freedom Dinner.
That is on September 22nd at Horizon. So we want to make sure people know where and when. There are, it is, there are individual tickets for $75, table of eight for $6.50. If, I'm going to be signing up, and I've got my check already, but if other council members are interested, we could always try and get a table. It'd be good to be highly represented, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, so. That's coming up on the 22nd. On the 20th is the International Day of Peace Celebration, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Ascension St. Mary's Hospital. There'll be community speakers, live music, food trucks, and painting, peace poles. In addition, you've heard mention of the Fire Ops, there's also the Society of Fire Department Awards and Recognition Event coming up October 8th. This is a reminder of the plan. Hopefully, everybody will be there. I do have something that might be a conflict for me, so you might end up having to cover. Hopefully, I'll be able to be there, but I hope as many council members as possible can be there. This, the Fire Department, it's their awards and recognition event, and it's a really wonderful event, and it's really gratifying to be able to participate. And we'll, every one of us, I hope, can be there, chief. Let me see. Frank, that is all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn? Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried.